We'll have a moment to start the meditation and touch the flag.
Thank you.
I would like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call the meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent approval by county administrator Renata McClure. Good morning, Renata.
Good morning. We have 28 exonerations for $18,858.91 minutes for April 20th and April 21st, 2021. Vouchers, General County Fund, $221,708.61. Cold Severance, $10,000. 911, $653.84. Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,006,9082. Mason Dixon Park, $1,006,3541. Recreation Levy for $1130. Assessor's valuation, $540.67. Purchasing card vouchers, General County Fund, $15,002,1335. 911, $2,0233.19. Home confinement, $7,008,4663. Chestnut Ridge Park, $376.70. Mason Dixon Park, $162.83. Assessor's valuation, $471.65. For voucher total of $262,945. We have budget revisions that require in-house approval for jail non-reimbursable and home confinement and state approval for jail reimbursable, motor pool, and capital projects, other buildings. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website. Fiduciary orders for May 5th, 2021.
Move for approval. Second. The first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a separate fiduciary item?
Uh huh. We also have itemization of statement of services for fiduciary Commissioner George Armstead.
Okay. Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we also have an objection to the settlement in the estate of Marie E. Rebert.
Okay, that's the commissioner's pleasure.
Move to refer it to the fiduciary.
Fiduciary Commissioner?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 I like doing that.
Anything else, Renata?
No, that's fine.
Okay, introduction, new employees, personnel changes. James Smith, Director of MECA 911. Morning, Jimmy.
Morning, Mr. Smith. I love everybody's morning. This morning, I'd like to present, even though she's not here with us, Madison Atkins. Madison started on May the 1st. She's actually a transfer from the Port Security now over to MECA. She'll be on a probationary period with a salary of $16.30 an hour.
Second. Okay, this item says that it's a vacant telecommuners position. Is that a recon vacancy or is that a long-held vacancy?
Uh, recon.
Okay, all right. We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, Carrie Blaney, County Clerk, Tanya.
Good morning, Tanya. How are you?
Good, how are you all?
All right.
My name is Tanya Duncan. On behalf of County Clerk Carrie Blaney, it's my pleasure to present to the county commission the following new employees in the county clerk's office. This is Lisa Carpenter and Cal Schenberger. Both have been hired as full-time, non-exempt employees and their start date was May 3rd, 2021.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, and these positions also are to fill vacancies.
Correct.
These are long-held vacancies that have been on.
Uh, I believe, yeah. Double check with Carrie, but I'm sure.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Misty Seem. Is Misty here?
We've got John Matthew McGowan. He will be part-time seasonal maintenance at $11 an hour. I believe his start date is actually not until May 17th.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome, Mr. McGowan. We have any more personnel changes?
Not that I do.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is comments from the public. We'll open the comments from the public session. Anybody that wants to address the commission can come forward. Okay, doesn't look like we have anybody, so then close comments from the public. Next item, Resolution, Infrastructure Week 2021.
Do we have Tony here? Hi.
If you'd just come up and for the record, state your name and go ahead and read your resolution. For the record, my name is Tony Feini. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you can take off your mask if you want.
Wonderful. Yeah. My name is Tony Feini. I'm a public finance attorney with Stepto &amp; Johnson. But today, I'm here on behalf of the Morgantown Area Partnership's Government Affairs Committee, Infrastructure Subcommittee, and wanted to say thank you to the commissioners for allowing us a few moments during this meeting to draw attention to Infrastructure Week and to introduce this resolution. The vision of the Infrastructure Subcommittee is to create community awareness and action in support of our natural and man-made infrastructure so that it continues to serve as the foundation upon which our shared community can flourish for generations to come. And invite anyone here and anyone listening to, go to the partnership website. We're going to have several events, virtual events, as you may imagine, next week. Virtual panel on Wednesday, another virtual panel on Friday, discussing, among other things, the state of infrastructure in our area, the upcoming COP plans and transportation plans and how they intertwine, and a variety of other things. We even have a survey on the city of Morgantown's website to gain some public input on their opinion of the current state of infrastructure. So, if I may, read this proclamation.
Certainly.
Whereas the week of May 10 through May 14, 2021, is observed in West Virginia and nationally as Infrastructure Week. And whereas Montague County, West Virginia relies on critical infrastructure, including our roads and bridges, our railroads, our locks and dams, our airports, our sidewalks and rail trails, our water system, our power grid, our broadband internet, and our connectivity to the regional, national, and global economy through the aforementioned modes of transportation. And whereas this infrastructure enhances our local and regional economy, our quality of life, our safety, our public health, and the strength of our communities as demonstrated by some recent local infrastructure improvements to the Star City entrance and waterfront, Mon General Drive and Maple Drive, the UTC Westridge Business Center, and other TIF investments. And nationally, decades of deferred maintenance and underfunding have pushed our infrastructure to the point of crisis with preventable catastrophic failures, including derailments and collapses occurring as a result. And the United States of America risks losing its competitive advantage to foreign economies by failing to adequately invest in its infrastructure. And every dollar invested in infrastructure generates nearly $2 in economic output. And to grow our economy, keep Americans safe, and strengthen our communities, we need all levels of government to work with the private sector to rebuild and repair our nation's infrastructure. An Infrastructure Week has been established to highlight our infrastructure needs and to encourage our leadership at the federal, state, and local levels to support future infrastructure projects. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Montague County Commission officially recognizes the week of May 10, 2021 as Infrastructure Week and urges the citizens of our community to join in this special observance with appropriate acknowledgements and learning opportunities found at the National Infrastructure Week website, www infrastructureweek.org. Thank you, commissioners.
Have a motion to approve.
Move. Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? I want to thank you, thank you for, one, your participation on the subcommittee portion of map. I'm glad to see you guys out and getting involved in these things because as commissioners, infrastructures are most challenging and important duty to try to move forward. So, this is very, this is very important and, you know, I want to thank you and your subcommittee for all your efforts.
Well, we certainly appreciate that. We've got a small team, but we've been pretty diligent over the past couple of months. And again, thank you for the time.
Well, it's good to see new faces too.
Good.
So, thank you. I really appreciate it. So, thank you very much. You have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do we sign it?
Yeah.
I'll get this signed and I'll give it to Russ and to you.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Renata.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Once again, thank you very much. Okay, continuing with the agenda. Next item on the, keyboard's frozen. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by Dr. Lee Smith, Executive Director and County Health Officer for the Montague County Health Department. And I believe, Dr. Smith, you want to provide an update on COVID? Is it working, thing? Yeah, just the right error, we'll push it forward. Yep, there you go. Okay.
Okay, the, uh.
Well, just for one second, you guys, the presentation is.
Anyway, for another day.
What is it?
Dr. Smith. The presentation, the background is supposed to move, but that's okay. It doesn't do anything other than entertain.
Was earlier.
It's the heavy rains that were happening.
The presentation's in your folder, so if you guys want to pull it up so that you can see it.
Yeah.
But otherwise, it's arranged for the public to see it, so.
I want to thank the partnership for, I heard the word "public health" in there, so we get some recognition. Always good to get recognition, so. All right, well, on with the show. So, okay. So, most people have seen this slide, one version or another. This is a cumulative summary of COVID cases in Montague County since the beginning, which started like in May, I mean, March the 20th of 2020. And then this is a seven-day average, so the first seven days in March of 2020, we just, you know, have one or two cases, and then the day seven, we could add them all up. And you can see that there are three bars here. There's a fourth one that's not added because it's so small, but using the Harvard metrics, anything under one case, less than one case per 100,000 population is in the green zone. And then from one case to nine cases is the yellow zone. From 10 cases to 15 is the gold zone. And then from 15 to 25, that bar's moved a little bit, should be up, yeah, it's a little bit, is the orange zone. And then above 25 cases per 100,000 is the red zone. And you can see that this is June and July of 2020. This is when people started coming back from vacation, so this is sort of the Myrtle Beach spike, if you want to, you know, give it a name. And then the next spike is August and September, when we got an influx of students into town. And then this remaining big blob of spikes is when we went, this is November. Weather changed, people indoors. And so we had November, this little divot here is sort of Thanksgiving because people were not getting tested. And then we had the Christmas holidays, then we had New Years. And if you look at this red zone here, we went into the red zone in November and we didn't come out until after March, which was 113 days we spent in the red zones, which is over a third of the year. And that's unfortunate because what that means, you know, we can make the numbers arbitrary, but it means that you've got widespread infection in the community, and we worry about infrastructure in terms of how many beds we have in the hospital, what the impact's going to be, et cetera. So, we started to come out of that in, again, in March, and then we had a little bit of April. And you can see right here, we dipped down just for the first time into the yellow zone and then immediately shot back up through there. So, our numbers are above 10. It's about 12, 13 cases. And so we remain in the, in the gold zone. And, but you can see that the main thing to take from this is that the slope of this curve continues to go down. And at some point in time, we will get back into approaching the green phase, which I have looked forward to for a very long time. And hopefully, the things that we have done at the level of public health of trying to get people tested, isolated, quarantined, and now vaccinated, and now dealing with the variants, to try to keep this, this community safe. So, that's sort of an overview of where we have been and what it is up to date. So, speaking of vaccines, this is when we started, Montague County Health Department started vaccinations on December 16. And we were by ourselves until we formed the coalition with Emergency Management, Federal Quotient Healthcare Center, Mon Health, and W Medicine. And then we started, the green line is the first doses and the black line is the second doses or completed series, if you will. We don't have really any Johnson &amp; Johnson on this, so this is both Moderna and Pfizer. And so you can see that we were going pretty, pretty good guns. Once we started working at the Sears Center, we were able to do thousands per day. When it was just the Health Department and we were at the National Guard, the highest we ever did by ourselves was 850. And it took everything that we had. It was all the king's horses and all the king's men, and it was exhausting. And while we could, we could probably have done 1,000, there was no way we were going to be able to do that on a weekly or even a daily basis as we moved forward. So, it was a great opportunity for us to partner. And so, once we did that, we were getting, the maximum number that we've done in one day at the Sears building has been 3,500. So, we have the infrastructure there and the ability to pull that off. However, as we get into mid-April, you can see that we're reaching a plateau. And that's in part due to what the experts say is fatigue, COVID fatigue. People are tired of it. We're all tired of wearing masks. We're all tired of doing all the things that, and it just becomes noise in the background and people don't pay any attention to it. There now is more supply than there is demand. We have more vaccines than we have people armed so we can put them into. And so there's a bit of apathy, which is the term that the CDC uses in terms of, what can we do now to move this plateau? Because this represents some 40,000 people in their first dose and approximately that same amount in their second dose. But that is about 40% of the county in eligible population. So, we have 105,612 citizens, but out of that, we don't do anybody 16 and younger yet. Okay, and so hopefully, that will come. So, out of the eligible population, we're sitting somewhere around 40%. Most experts will say that herd immunity comes somewhere around 60, 70%. So, we're not quite there yet, and we're struggling with trying to get people to come. So, at the Sears Center and working with the community partners, we've had evening clinics, we've had Saturday clinics, we've had clinics where you didn't even have to enroll because some people complain that it's an arduous to go online and navigate all that. We've done a pretty good job in the 65 and over category, but trying to get that middle group of people has, has been a difficult chore. We appreciate working with the food pantries and trying to get groups of people together because it's an opportunity to reach people that, that haven't had the opportunity to get vaccinated. We've worked with the, the local NAACP chapter and looking to how can we improve vaccination rates for communities of color, African-Americans, other individuals, and vulnerable populations. We've had mobile units going out to those who say that they are homebound. And so, the governor announced yesterday, I believe it was, or day before, that they want to have vaccinations performed over this Memorial Day weekend at all of the state parks in, in West Virginia. I get it. I understand what is trying to be accomplished. I wish that they would invite the people who are actually administering the vaccines to have some input into the discussion. We're working with Preston County Memorial because the only state park that we have in Mon County is Cooper's Rocks, and it's sort of a shared venue. It's partly in Preston County, partly in our county. I don't know that there's going to be a big demand, but, you know, Montague County Health Department has, you know, answered the bell on all occasions, and we will try to do something to, to meet this, this request. I'm not sure that there's a lot of people that want to show up for vaccination on a holiday weekend, and there's some logistic issues. You know, Cooper's Rocks has 50 miles of trails, and how are you going to watch somebody? And, oh, I think I'll just walk down the trail here, and then you have to have EMS. There's some, some issues with it there. And so I'm not sure that that's the best way, but I understand that we need to make this more available to people. So, we're, we're working on it. I just wanted to, to put this slide up. I know that there's dozens and dozens of maps, whether it's the hospital regions or EMS regions or threat preparedness regions. This is what this map is. So, following 9/11, when federal funding started coming into the state, threat preparedness regions were developed in the public health departments across the state. And so this six counties, kind of this purplish-pink color here, rose color, so Preston, Mon, Marion, Taylor-Harrison, and Dodridge makes up what's called the PAC region. And then there's the Eastern Panhandle, there's the Central One, there's the Southern West Virginia, there's the, this Western part, there's the Mid-Ohio Valley, the Northern Panhandle. And Canal County has been their own because of the attempt was to try to divide this by population so that the population groups were about the same. Our group of those six counties makes up 16% of the population of the state and about 10% of the landmass. And so when we get funding from the DHHR and the CDC, it usually comes through in these type of divisions. And we're happy to work in these partnerships because I think that it makes us all stronger. The PAC region has developed a reputation that if you want it done, give it to these guys because they'll, they'll step up and do it. But I think that we're uniquely positioned because we have I-79 that runs north-south, and then we've got I-68 that runs east-west, and then we've got Route 50 that connects the others. We're very much connected geographically and by transportation. We have the larger higher education, we've got regional jails, federal penitentiaries, and so there's a lot going on in that particular region that maybe others don't have. And so I wanted to take a moment, and I apologize that this numbers are very small. And at the bottom, you can see the, the state numbers, and so I'll just read these off. Actually, I just want to focus on Montague County. So, our population is 105,612 people. And to date, as of yesterday, when I put this together, we've had 9,111 cases of COVID in our county, just our county, okay? And unfortunately, we have experienced 82 deaths from that group of people. Now, if you look at the, if you divide 82 by 9,000, it's less than 1% chance of death. If there's one way to look at that, if you contract COVID in Montague County, what's your, what's your chance of expiring? It's less than 1%. Now, I didn't put it on here, and I don't mean to poke at Canal County, but Canal County has had over, I think it's 14,000 cases of COVID and over 250 deaths. And so the chance of dying is in relationship to contracting COVID in, in Canal County is like 2.5%. And so these, these are quite variable. I mean, if you're in Dodridge County, that's a pretty low percentage, right? And so what we did is we have done 200 more tests. So, at least everybody in the county's had an opportunity to get swabbed, okay? And we've delivered 47,403 primary vaccines, meaning the first dose has been given to 47,000 people, and we've given the second dose to 42,000 people. So, the way that the CDC looks at this is in terms of, you know, what we do when we were looking at number of cases, we look at number of cases per 100,000 population. Well, in this case, we look at vaccines per thousand number of population. So, as you can see, Montague County leads the pack here in having 449 people per thousand population receiving primary vaccines and almost 400 getting their secondary vaccines. That is the best in the state with the exception of two counties. One is Tucker County, and they have like 6,000 population, so, you know, they've done a good job of getting their people vaccinated. We've done certainly more than they have. The other is Hampshire County. Other than that, Mon County's done pretty much a great job of doing that. So then if you add this up, as I mentioned, all the populations were 16% of the state, although we've had less than that, we're about 15.4% of the state's cases come from our area. We've experienced only 10% of the deaths in West Virginia. We've done over our share of laboratory testing. We're above our 16%, just barely with the primary vaccines and the secondary vaccines. And then you can look down here at the bottom and see what, what the state has been doing. So, I think that as a community effort, I appreciate all the partnership and the opportunity that we've had to get vaccines. We have done a good job, and now we have to sort of change gears once again and try and beat the bush and get additional people to, to step up and get their vaccines. And so that's a different, different kind of animal. So, the question comes up with variants, what's going on with variants? And so there are dozens and dozens and dozens of COVID variants. Some mutate and actually become beneficial because they're not as easily infectable to people. Some is that the disease is less severe. So, we don't pay any attention to those. And then some, they get variants in there, they get mutations in there, and we don't know what they do. Doesn't seem to impact anything. But these are, these two, the UK variant, the California variant, are variants of interest, to use like an FBI term, right? Is that these variants have been shown to be more infectious, in the, in both cases, more infectious, and in the UK case, not only is it more infectious, but it has a higher severity rate and a higher death rate associated with it. So, just a quick word about vaccines. Vaccine is not a guarantee that you won't get COVID. What it does is if you contract COVID after vaccine, and when I say after vaccine, meaning two weeks after your second dose, if you contract a, a COVID virus at that point in time, the odds are in your favor that you will not be admitted to the hospital, you will not have a severe case, and you won't die as a result of it. In the world of vaccination, that's a win. And so, when we look at the types that we have here, this code number of the B1 dot 1 dot 7 is a descriptor, and if you work with the genomics, you know where it is in a thing. But all of these variations are in the little spikes. And most people have seen a, an image of a COVID, looks like a big basketball with little spikes on it, and it's the mutations of these spikes that cause the, whether it's more infective or less infective. These are more infective. In West Virginia, there are 471 as of this week, known cases of the UK variant. And in Montague County, we have 127, which is about, over a little over quarter of those. And if you look at who's getting it, it's from age 2 through age 90. And then the California version actually has two modifications, that's why there's two numbers. two numbers. The 427 is not the engine type, Jimmy, just saying. And West Virginia has 213, and we have 76% of the California version here in Montague County. And its age range is from 5 to 81. So does this give you a good snapshot of what's going on in Montague County? No. And the reason is this. It takes sometimes up to several weeks to get the results of the genomic testing. So we're just now getting the results in early May of people who had the test in the middle of April. And therefore, we're not testing everybody. We don't have 100% participation. We don't have a quick way of identifying it, so it doesn't give a complete picture. All we can do is, after the fact, show that there are these variants in the county. Now, as I've said that, that we've been doing a good job, there's a little bit of bad news with that as well. The top 12 counties with new cases, here's our graph that we've been showing since forever. And Canal County is the top county to contract COVID, followed by Berkeley County, Raleigh County, Jefferson County. We're number four, Putnam, Marion, and Harrison. So again, we're kind of linked here, Fayette, Mercer, Wayne, and Ohio Counties. So we're still seeing, even though the numbers are diminishing, it's still highly infectious. The variants are carrying the day now, and we're starting to see a little bit of an uptake. And when you add them all up across the state, it's a big number. Again, that's the slide, and I just want to point out that these numbers are going up. And so we'll keep an eye on that, and hopefully we'll be heading in the right direction. And then how do we compare statewide? Now, the good news is, is that they're, it's still infectious, it's still out there, there's people contracting the disease. And the CDC says that, and this is a state-based thing, is that community transmission still remains high. The message is, is that this is not the time to lower your guard. There's variants out there, people are not vaccinated to the level that we think that we have herd immunity. It's easy to get the disease, and we want to get, you know, more people vaccinated. For the state, we're only at 35.8% of people having the first dose. Now, again, in the over 65, we've got 70%. So I think we've done a good job statewide for them. And only 30% of our entire population has received both vaccines. And then over 65, almost 64% of those have had vaccines. Now, it's my understanding that the Food and Drug Administration will be receiving a request by Pfizer here within the next couple of days to open up vaccinations to 12 through 16. And remember, Moderna was stopped at age 18, and they're trying to get their numbers pushed down to 12 as well. But that'll be weeks away. So we stand ready to do kids down to age 12, and we certainly hope that, that we have an interest in people going on vacation and traveling and what have you, that we can do this. And then this is another thing, just to reiterate, that if you look here in Montague County, community transmission, it's not high as it is here in Canal in the middle of the state, but it's still substantial. So I think that if you look at that chart and say, oh, well, look, the numbers are going down, let's take the masks off, let's have a picnic, it's not the right answer. There is still substantial transmission. And this is the opportunity that we have to be in control of our destinies in terms of trying to do the things that work. And I think that's the end of my presentation. So good news, bad news, all in one. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to get additional people signed up. I'm not sure that the $100 bond has got much traction.
It's hard to pull.
I, I'm, I, I think that we're at the point of doing small numbers. We have worked with various groups, car dealerships, and, you know, the food pantries and such, trying to get groups of eight to 10. It's interesting that, I saw an article that now that pharmacies are the number one entity that is wasting vaccine. And, but the whole enterprise is changing. So now we're being told by the state that if you have one person that needs the vaccine, go ahead and open a bottle, even though you may be wasting nine doses. Before, if you didn't have 10 people in the queue, you were not to do it. So things are moving, they're changing, and we're looking for every opportunity to increase our number. So you can see that at the state level, they're in the 30%, in Mon County, we're in the 40%. Neither of us have reached sort of that golden number of the 60%, which would be the ideal of herd immunity. So I think that there's a lot of remaining distrust once things get out into the social media. What we hear is people have concerns about birth defects and sterility, none of which are factual, but as you all well know, once it gets out into social media, it's got to be the truth, right? So putting the lid on that genie bottle's been very, very difficult. So we're working as studiously as possible. If anybody has any suggestions, we certainly would be willing to entertain those in ways that we can get more done. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I do have a couple of questions, but I'll go ahead.
No, go ahead. And then I'll wait.
I've gotten, I got this question just this morning. What's the state's current guidelines in regards to, I know that masks are still in place.
Correct.
What other restrictions are still in place, just from a general standpoint?
There's been an overall relaxation of the, we now have unlimited numbers of people that can gather in an event. So the fairs and the music festivals and all that. However, people read and take from that what they want to. They read the first sentence and don't read the whole paragraph. You should still maintain social distancing in a crowd. We'd prefer that you wear a mask, but there's not the limits on that. The elevator is a perfect example that we're relaxing the number of people, but you're still in somewhat of a crowded thing. But it's not for very long, right? You know, the amount of time that you go up and down in a little box is measured in seconds. So a lot of this is changing. The CDC has got a lot of pressure, particularly on travel, local, domestic, and international. And so I don't want to tell you something here, and then this afternoon it'd be wrong. I would suggest that you can look at the governor's webpage, which has the most current, and there's probably, we get one or two updates a week on what has changed.
Tell the public is just to keep following the three Ws.
Yep.
Wash your hands, watch your distance, and wear a mask.
Yes. Can't go wrong with that.
The other, other question I want to have is, is there a reason why Mon County has such a high percentage of the UK variant, especially the California variant, where you said that's 76% of the state?
Travel.
Is it because, because we're more sophisticated in testing?
Yes. We go to California and hang out, yeah. It's, it's, it's the travel, and the California variation was linked to people in higher education. And the UK came with other travel. But I'll give you an example of how this came, how quickly it spreads. It's short, if you'll humor me for just a second. There's a long-term care facility in Montague County that'll go unnamed for the purposes of this discussion, and there are people that work and have business relationships with the people on, that live in the long-term care facility. So two individuals are in partnership, and they have a business that they interact with the long-term care facility. But one of them has a, an intimate relationship with another person, and this person contracts UK variant after vaccine. And we call that a breakthrough case. So this individual infects intimate partner, intimate partner infects business partner. All of three have had vaccines. Then they go to long-term care facility, all of which have vaccines, and quickly have infected three other people there. And now we're dealing with a vulnerable population, one of which is in the hospital on a ventilator. So it can just, in the blink of an eye, and again, I don't know any of this for two weeks after the fact because I can't get the genomic testing. All I know is that I've got people who are having COVID after vaccine. So just a quick word about the, anybody who is, who has COVID symptoms following vaccination, we really want to get you tested, and we really want to get the genetic testing on that. Anybody who's been previously healthy, very robust, you know, and they didn't have any symptoms, now all of a sudden they're brought low with that, we want to get those as well. Or people who said, you know, I had something way back in the fall, I never got tested, but I was sick as a dog, and now I've got some kind of similar symptoms. The other thing that I think is a take-home point is that COVID remains, the symptoms remain over a large spectrum. There are some people who feel like that they can't get off the couch. There are other people who will swear to God that it is their allergies, and there are people who said, well, I had a little sore throat, and that was it, and I went to work. It's the people who continue to go about their daily business, not thinking that they might have COVID. We do testing, it is available, you know, all the time, and we can get the results back in the same day. So in our world, if you have a sore throat or sniffles, it is COVID to prove it otherwise. But trying to get people to incorporate that into their daily format. I'm sorry, I've gone off the rails.
Certainly, that informs that people really just need to continue being diligent and follow the three Ws and try to be extra careful. I do have one, one last question. The numbers they send me weekly, I'm a little concerned about the 6 to 17.
Yes, sir.
Age, age group, because that one, even though we're, our numbers are going down and we're in the 10 range, that particular group is about 30.2.
That's correct.
So why, why is that number so out of kilter with all the rest of the numbers?
I don't have a single one-sentence answer. I think it's multifactorial. I think that you're dealing with a young, previously healthy population who probably doesn't have his symptoms as much as somebody 65 or older. So they continue to go to school, they continue to play sports, they're sitting in a room with other kids taking tests. The opportunity for spread in these arenas where there's lots of students is rife for spread. And then I think that there's a minority, but still present, population of families who feel that the sports finals, regional, state, playoff, whatever, is much more important than anybody's safety. And I say that because the hostility that we encounter in speaking to people is, has reached a new high, and people don't want to, to follow rules. We've been very stringent and tried to keep people safe in Mon County, and, you know, it's become politicized. CDC has, has knuckled to some pressures, and people think that, well, in my case, I don't have to follow the rules, I can do X, Y, and Z. So I think, I think it's multifactorial, but it is certainly present in the school system. There's no question.
I really love the rate under 65 to 74, zero, which that's, that's awesome, that's awesome.
Yeah. That's because we've got herd immunity in that group.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I do want to thank you. You came out when Pantry Plus More, and you mentioned that we gave out 200 to 200 families, and we were able to feed, but we were able to give 50 shots. So that's, you know, that's 25%. That was an enormous amount of number. So, you know, anytime we can work with you on that. I do want to throw out the date of August 7.
Okay.
That's the back-to-school bash.
Okay.
And we have 1,200 student families.
All right.
So it's something we might want to look at and consider. Hopefully, many of them had already got it, but you don't know. But that's just something that would hit before school actually begins, so it's, I'll give you that date. The only, I guess, my concern is that it's frustrating to try and open up the community, and people still not getting the vaccine. They say, well, we don't care. But what they don't understand is, and let's use a restaurant, I'll use my wife, for example. She will not go to that restaurant knowing that a third of the people may not have had it. So what people don't understand is, yes, they may not have it, but it does affect businesses in other locations, that if they had the vaccine, more people would be going out. And that's, and I'm not sure how we deal with that, and that's, I think, what we're dealing with. But I do have one question for you. What do I say to the individuals who said, I've had COVID, I'm not getting a vaccine now? And I don't know how to respond to that.
That's a great question, and I think that one can point to the CDC recommendations, which say that we know that your body survived, and you made some antibody against COVID. We know that the vaccine works against some of the mutations, the variants, that you haven't had. And we know that the, that the antibodies from the vaccine last at least six months, and we're unsure of the people who had natural occurring, if you want to use that term, because we didn't test them to begin with, and we don't know to, you know, find out how long their antibodies are. So the recommendation is clear that if you have had COVID, or if you haven't had COVID, the best protection against COVID-19 is to get the vaccine. Pretty clear. I did want, you stimulated a thought in my mind, and thank you for the, for the, August the 7th, did you?
Yes.
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 Because, just for the logistics piece of this, is that we still have kids that need to have a certain number of vaccines to go to public school, whether it's measles, mumps, or rabies, the usual type of things that we do at the Health Department. But there's a two-week delay if you're getting the measles versus the COVID, or if you've got COVID vaccine, then we can't give you that. So the back-to-school things are great, but we should probably try to advertise that or put that into media just to make sure that we can get all this done before.
Yes.
And if it's Moderna, it's four weeks. If it's Pfizer, it's three weeks between the first and the second doses.
Okay. We'll, we'll sit down and work with you on that.
Yeah. It'd be great to have a plan.
Just to say, thank you. I know you guys have been 24/7 on this, and you also, by the way, have a whole department that you run before COVID and continue to run with your normal day-to-day. And I don't know how you guys are doing it, but we appreciate all the efforts.
It's, it's of note before, one of the rules is that in order to treat STDs, physician needs to be present just to make sure there's no adverse reactions. And so the amount of STDs that we're seeing in the community, and TB in the community, this has all come home to rest because we closed our clinics in March, and they weren't open until June. And so now we've got lots of those kind of outbreaks. So you're right, the fun never ends. But we appreciate your all's support very much. And if you have any questions or any thoughts about how we can get other people vaccinated, I certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Okay. Continuing with the agenda, the next item on the agenda is, Colleen Coon, grants? None? Okay. Correspondence. Renata?
I just have one. Received an email from HR Scott, who's actually here in the audience, about the North Central FFA Ham, Bacon, and Egg Show will be May 8 at 6:00 PM with Joe R. Pyle Auctions.
Okay, and it's virtually?
Uh-huh.
Okay. How do people know where to go?
They say go to Joe R. Pyle Auctions website.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other correspondence? Tom, do you have any?
Nope.
Okay. Unfinished business. There's none?
None.
New business. Consideration to approve allocation of funds for installation of kitchen equipment at Montague County Extension Services and 4H Center. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move.
Second.
All right. Discussion? Just for the record, we made a budget revision earlier in the meeting that we approved, and that's what this, the budget revision was for, was to remove, move money from contingency into other buildings so that we can go ahead and get the equipment that we purchased last winter installed. So the kitchen will finally be fully operational, hopefully by the beginning of the new fiscal year.
Yeah.
And we'll start moving towards some of those programs that we wanted to have.
And we'll start moving towards some of those programs that we wanted to have in that facility. So I'm really excited and looking forward to this. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. To consider for approval, proposal from Schindler Elevator Corporation to furnish and install the following with respect to the equipment located at the Justice Center.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
One, one of the elevators is down, and we need to get it fixed, and it just makes sense to fix them both at the same time.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an old building, and I know we made it new, there's still some old components, so.
Yes.
Okay. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Do we have any other new business? I have to apologize, I'm kind of flying blind because my keyboard died on me in the middle of a meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. We have reports from elected officials or any other department supervisors? Okay. Let's see, we have none. Reports from county commissioners. Jeff?
Yeah, I don't have anything today.
Tom?
Yeah, real quickly, just as, and I appreciate Ben putting in the paper, that the county commissioners are going down tomorrow to talk with Charleston officials and DOH office and governor's staff to basically jumpstart our roads to progress, see what we need to do about getting the projects, and specifically Exit 155, and to also voice our strong support of the Harmony Grove. So we will see how that works out tomorrow. And the other thing is, as you remember, the three of us have been talking about economic development doesn't end at the state line. And I'm pleased to report, when I went up to Waynesburg, several banks contacted me and wanted to set up conversations, and they told yesterday that I passed on to Russ Rogerson that for whatever reason, because we're up there, somebody gave a grant of $100,000 to Bridgeway Capital to offer to businesses in Montague County. And they have to do it by September 30, and Russ Rogerson's getting all the information. But it was nice that somebody up there in Green County decided, and the money has to be spent in Mon County because of our working relationship. So I just wanted to say that it, it does pay, and I appreciate the three county commissioners for seeing, you know, the future and understanding this, and this, this could be, help several businesses. That's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Since the last meeting, it was a very light schedule. Last Friday, we had our staff reports, and in the afternoon, I had a Mountain Park Executive Committee meeting. Yesterday, I had a meeting with our West Ridge developer in preparation for our meeting in, tomorrow. Today's a regular day. Tomorrow morning, I have a MAP Executive Committee meeting on my way to Charleston, and then we have our meeting with the governor's office, and then I have, we have a call with West Ridge regarding a future bond issue in the afternoon. Friday, we have staff reports, and then in the afternoon, I have a meeting with W Hospitals. Other than that, happy Cinco de Mayo, and this weekend is Mother's Day weekend, so happy Mother's Day weekend. Hopefully, all, all you mothers will have a nice, relaxing, well-deserved weekend. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Still move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.